We warned you.
Really, not that bad.
No, we are used to it. Okay, are we good? Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Nags Head Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, March 18th. Real quickly, I would like to introduce and recognize our newest member, Basil Belches. Welcome, Basil, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Everybody's met Basil or?
I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name.
That's okay.
I will get it.
Not the first time, I'll be the last.
Okay.
So, the first order of business will be to approve our agenda for the day?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, moving on to public comment and audience response. I think we have people here, I know we have people here, to talk about one of our action items, the site plan amendment. Is there anybody that wanted to make public comment before we get to our agenda? Okay, great, we'll close the public comment then and move on to the approval of our minutes from February 18th.
And make a motion to approve the minutes.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, moving on then to our action items, the first of which will be consideration of a site plan amendment by the Keith Corporation and Timmins Group for the construction of Starbucks Restaurant at 7100 South Croatan Highway.
Good morning, Planning Board. Was trying to project this site plan up here, it's a little small, so if you need me to enlarge it at any point through the conversation, just let me know. I'm not great with this program just yet, so. Okay, so first up, we have a site plan amendment before you on behalf of the Keith Corporation and Timmins Group for the outlet Snacks Head. The request is for construction of a 2,220 square foot Starbucks Restaurant with an outdoor patio located within the existing parking lot at outlet Snacks Head. And I realize I did not include an overall screenshot of where this would go, but it's on the south side of the parking lot. I think the last time that you guys looked at it, it was in that same location, so as you come in, you would make a left and it's going to be right there. The location is 7100 South Croatan Highway and it's an existing shopping center. The property is Zoned C2, it's also in the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district. For flood hazard, I usually skip over that section because it's always the same, but I did want to call out some information on their flood elevation. So this property is located in a town local elevation standard of nine feet and their property is under that. They do not want to bring in fill because that's going to generate a whole other load of issues that they'll have to deal with, so they're going to keep it below that nine feet, and I think it's around 7.3, and they're going to use floodproofing, which is an option for commercial buildings. So they'll have to provide floodproofing information when they get their building permit application submitted, but that's a little bit different. They're not going to elevate above the flood, they're going to floodproof the structure. Section 6.6 of the Table of Uses and Activities states that shopping center is a special use within the C2, and then section 7.32 states what uses are allowed within commercial mixed-use developments and sit-down restaurants are a permitted use there. So that's what we have, you may be familiar with previous iterations of the request where there was a drive-thru, that is now gone, this is just a detached standalone structure. Lot coverage, it is for this district, it should be at 55, but the existing lot coverage was at 70.2 and their proposal is actually reducing lot coverage, so it's decreasing the degree of nonconformity, so that's always welcome and compliant. Height, they can go to 35 feet, they're at 24, so they're well within compliance there. Architectural design, I have quite a few notes here, but section 10.82 of the UDO states how they have to come across their architectural design compliance, they're working within the parameters of Division 2 of the UDO, which is building design. As I stated in the staff report, while the proposal meets many of the fundamental requirements, including building scale, building size, and dimensions, the architectural design elements have been designed to meet just the minimum requirements in these instances. The proposal does not fully align with the intent of the architectural guidelines, although they are met. In section 10.88, 4.1.1 and 4.1.2, we emphasize the importance of windows and doors being visually compatible with architectural styles. Windows should reflect a residential style, including the appearance of double-hung or multi-painted windows. Try to pull this up, it's a large document, so hopefully All right, so we're going to talk about architecture, we'll just leave it on this. The proposed windows, well, windows can exceed a maximum of 30 square feet. The proposed windows are at 29.75, so technically, they do comply, but the overall appearance raises concerns whether they align with the residential style and local architecture intended by the ordinance. Section 10.88.4.1.5 states that doors shall be no wider than six feet and not taller than eight feet without having at least a 12-inch separation between the windows and the doors. States that too little of a window area creates an unwelcoming presence and too much can be jarring from the context of Nags Head style. While the west and south-facing entrances technically meet that minimum 12-inch trim separation, the resulting design does not appear to align with our codes. There's probably other pictures that are a little clearer, but here you can see they've got their door and then the transom above and this separation here. So that's a lot of glass, I'm not sure that's what we intended with our commercial design standards. The next section speaks to entrances shall be identified through the use of architectural detail that may include porches or roofs for shelter, recessing, decorative lighting, trim railings, in addition to pedestrian walkways. The west-facing entrance, the one that faces the shopping center, which is going to be this one down here, that incorporates a roofed area with an outdoor patio. The south-facing entrance, which is facing the parking lot, only features a small roof directly above the entry. Although the roof covering technically meets the ordinance language, the proposed design does lack architectural depth and visual interest. Again, we feel that it just falls short of the intent, however, it technically does meet it. Traditional Nags Head buildings utilize detail to provide visual interest and character to the design. This section goes on to state that application should incorporate one or more of the following design elements: exposed rafter tails, gable brackets, workable shutters, and column trim. I would note that the applicant has provided rafter tails, you can see those here along the roof line, so we appreciate that, but there is just no other Nags Head style architectural design elements that have been proposed. Ideally, we would have more than one, but again, that's all that the section requests, so that's all that was provided. We also have a section of the architectural design standards that states on the front and on each side of the building, windows shall comprise not less than 10% and not more than 40% of the building's vertical wall area. It's debatable, what you consider the rear as to where you see the front entrance, is the front that southern, or sorry, the western elevation facing the outlets, or is that the southern elevation facing the parking lot? There's entry doors on both, so how you view that determines how you would view the rear. But regardless of how you view the rear elevation, the eastern elevation that faces 158 lacks any architectural elements, that's going to be, I don't know if you can see my cursor, it's going to be this elevation here. While the staff recognizes that this side of the building contains the back of a house or the kitchen, there is a history of other projects within the town successfully incorporating elements such as faux windows, shutters, or other design features to mitigate visual impacts. If the planning board is inclined to recommend approval of the request, staff recommends conditioning approval on the inclusion of some type of design element, perhaps a faux window with shutters or some other type of architectural relief to maintain consistency with the town's design expectations, especially adjacent to a major thoroughfare. So that wraps up the architectural piece, so I'll go back up here to the site plan.
Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. Would you show the entire parking lot where this would actually be situated?
Yeah.
And orient us a little bit to the relationship to the highway?
Give me one moment. Pull up your GIS. Or Deer County's GIS, rather. Okay, so this is Gall Street here, this is the light.
Mm-hmm.
This is the primary entrance, and this proposal is going to be in this little pocket here. So you're going to have one side facing 158, you're going to have the entrance facing here towards the outlets and then out towards this parking area. And I apologize, I should have given an overall rendering in your packet, that was my mistake.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Kelly, no additional roads or driveways being cut from that to the bypass?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right, so the next item in your packet discusses parking, and we just have to park all the different uses that are in the shopping center. So obviously, the largest piece there is general retail, that has to be parked at one parking space per 250 square feet of gross floor area, plus one space for each employee, but no less than two. They run the numbers on that, and it contains 78,486 square feet of retail space, which equates to 314 parking spaces, and they have 22 units dedicated to retail, so they need 44 parking spaces there. There's two restaurants, one existing and one is currently in the works. Rose Brothers is there, they have about 440 square feet of customer service area, which is how we park restaurants. And then they have a new tenant, Village Realty, which will have about the same amount of customer service area, each of those requiring eight parking spaces.
Kelly, Village Pizza.
Sir, Village Pizza, my bad. I'm so used to saying.
They're going to do pizza?
No, Village Pizza. So that's the existing uses that have been parked. That requires 375 parking spaces. The Starbucks will contain about 825 square feet of customer service area, which is going to be an additional 15 parking spaces, and they have six parking spaces allocated for employees, bringing the total number of parking spaces for the shopping center up to 395. There's currently 488 parking spaces on site. The proposed development has demonstrated that once the development has been completed, there should be about 460 parking spaces. So I do want to note that that is technically compliant, they do have the minimum number of parking spaces. And that's what we have heard in the past, but at any rate, there is a reduction of parking by 28 parking spaces. 28 or 26. And we've always, staff has always had a concern with any reduction in parking on this site due to the popularity of the outlets, not only on rainy days, but during the end season as well. So any reduction in parking, staff has always had a concern there and we would continue to have that same concern. We put in your staff report, and the town engineer had also noted this in his comments from technical review committee, the proposal, even though the drive-through has been removed, it will generate additional parking demand, resulting in that net reduction of 28 parking spaces within the entire complex. The reduction raises concerns about internal traffic circulation, as fewer available spaces will likely lead to increased vehicle movement increased vehicle movement within the site and potential congestion at key entrances and exits. Additionally, the main entrance's vehicle stacking capacity has been exceeded, more frequently increasing the likelihood of vehicular accidents. That concern, as we said, has been expressed over the months by planning, police, and fire. The applicant did request a reduced loading berth and the town engineer did review the information that was provided, that was in your TRC comments, and the town engineer feels like that reduced loading berth is adequate, so that information's provided in your packet as well. In terms of the parking lot and surface materials, we do require that 20% of the parking area be in a permeable pavement, and they've provided actually more than that, they've proposed all of their parking stalls to be in a permeable surface, so that's certainly been met and exceeded. Interior parking lot landscaping, there is a requirement to provide that, it has to be at a minimum rate of 10% of the total area of the parking spaces. To accomplish that, they would need 180 square feet, and they are well beyond that with 650 square feet. There is a separate landscape plan in here that shows all the vegetation, so there's a large amount of vegetation proposed to be put back. They did provide a lighting plan, and the lighting plan that they provided is compliant with their standards. It will take a permit when they're, if this is approved and that lighting goes in, and then we'll do a light audit to confirm. There's no signage that has been requested as part of this application, that will have to be in a separate application that's administrative through the town. Water and sewage disposal, the outlets are on a separate treatment facility, they don't have a conventional system like we're used to. That system was designed by an engineer, so we just need something from that design engineer stating that there's additional capacity available to service this. In a previous iteration, we had that letter, we just don't have it with us for this newest iteration, I imagine we will, but we'll have to have that before the Board of Commissioners meeting. Traffic circulation, we already talked about that, we are concerned with the reduction of parking spaces, the loading berth is adequate, and they have shown adequate padding for fire trucks, sanitation trucks, things of that nature.
Is there a delivery truck route on here somewhere, did I see that? Like the way that the delivery trucks would
Right, so what they have proposed is most of their deliveries will just be in like in a standard box truck that will fit any of these parking spaces, but should a larger truck be needed, they will have to coordinate to have that truck come in off hours, where there's no one in that parking, in the parking lot, so they would just load in this, in this main drive aisle.
Okay.
But that would be early mornings, how you see trucks sometimes going into restaurants and places really early in the morning or really late at night.
Okay.
So they would have to coordinate that for a larger vehicle.
Okay.
Stormwater man-
How are the hours of operation?
Pardon?
Do we know that, the hours of operation?
Uh, they, they can let us know that.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not familiar.
Okay.
I think previously, they said starting at seven, but it, I'll let them speak.
Okay, that's fine.
Stormwater management, there's no increase in lot coverage, we already talked about that, they're actually decreasing lot coverage, there's no importation of fill, so nothing triggers stormwater management compliance, but they do have their improvements pitched towards existing stormwater management infrastructure, which the town engineer has deemed to be acceptable and compliant. As always, it has to meet building code and the Public Works Director also reviewed and approved it, just noting that should this move forward, they will have to work with the town on where that water tap's going to come from, but there should be no issues, just a comment. Staff finds that the site plan request generally is consistent with the use and development standards, however, we do encourage further refinement of the architectural design to better align with the Nags Head architectural style, specifically, if the planning board is inclined to recommend approval of the site plan, we really would like to see some type of architectural element on that east elevation facing 158. It's a lot of information, that's all I have, but we do have representatives from Keith Corporation, Timmins, and Ionic who have all worked on this design, so.
Great. Okay, thank you, Kelly. Does anybody have questions for staff? Okay, great. Are we going to hear from an applicant? The applicant, please. If you'd just step up and give us your name and, thanks.
Do you need the entity and the address for the record?
No, no, we have it.
Okay, I'm Beth Godfrey, I'm with the Keith Corporation, we're out of Charlotte, North Carolina, and we acquired the property in January. We bought it from Singerman, they were from Chicago, but we're super excited to own the property. We have Joanna Tucker, she is our onsite manager, she's local to Nags Head, and Taryn Stetson, we all work for the Keith Corporation. And you guys probably already know Chris and Eugene. Chris is our civil engineer and Eugene's our architect. But we're here to answer any questions and give you guys any more information. The hours, we think they'll be seven to seven, but it's, those are always market-dependent on the, on the tenants, so, but we think that's probably a pretty good guess. But anything I can answer, happy to.
First, I'm thinking, I'm wondering, so seven to seven, if a truck comes earlier, if there's, you know, the nature of coffee shops is it's early, bird catches the worm kind of thing, so I'm wondering if that is going to maybe kind of create a little bit of weirdness, one, and, which is generally a parking issue at the same time, accessibility to the building, esp- even if it's a box truck, and then more complicated if it's a larger vehicle.
I can get with Starbucks and understand more about their actual deliveries, like how many per week and exactly when. Usually they're early, early morning, they're before they open, they don't want to cause any congestion near their front door either, and same with the outlets, we don't want to cause any of that congestion. I think the deliveries are either very early in the morning, 4:00 AM, or later at night.
I can speak a little bit to the distribution side of it. Every supply, food and supply distributor would prefer to deliver between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. They'd like to make every delivery between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, and generally, in chain operations like this, they definitely do it during off-business hours because they can get in and get out more quickly, so I don't think that will be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, and this is also parking-related, there's outside seating, and seating is something, if it's interior, that would be included in and impacts parking requirements. Because this is outside parking, we're kind of, we're stepping aside at that aisle a little bit, and it's, it's going to mean that people are going to be especially lingering if they're in those seats, so this is, this, this will impact parking as well.
Sure, the, the way y'all's parking code works, I think it's one per 55 of indoor customer service area for sit-down restaurants, so I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, so that, that is correct.
They have outdoor areas, well, you, you park it for outdoors.
So we don't, like that's a waiting area, there's no customer service, there's no exchange of money, there's no taking orders, there's nothing like that, so there's nothing that would prohibit someone from leaving Starbucks and setting out there, of course, but that's honestly no different than any other restaurant within the town.
Okay, I guess what I'm wondering is, is there going to be any thought of, you know, providing Wi-Fi in the area?
I'm not sure, that's an operational.
Well-
Oh, from our center?
From, from the facility, you know, because that will be an amenity that, you know, people at coffee shops love, is to go to a coffee shop and, you know, hang out, get on their devices, do some work.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know what they usually do. My computer has Wi-Fi in it, so, I don't, I, you know, it's, I think it's kind of going to that now, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I was just wondering, in general, the, the nature of coffee shops is that, that this is kind of a function that they also serve, is, is a remote office sort of function.
Sure.
And in a vacation community like this, people will be getting away from their families, which they're glad to get away from for short periods of time, and finding some shelter with some good Wi-Fi and hanging out. And the nature of that area is perhaps excellent for that purpose, but will, will change the function to outside customer service in, in, in purpose, if not in permitted function. Is, that's my concern or question.
There's eight proposed seats on the patio.
How many?
Eight.
Eight.
Eight seats or eight tables?
Eight seats is what we heard, right Eugene?
What's the, what's the square footage of the patio roughly?
Well, the building's twenty-two hundred, so. Yeah.
So.
Maybe a little less.
I would say eight tables, more like eight than eight seats.
Well, there are eight tables on the rendering.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so.
But that's the same as Front Porch and Nagseth or Morning View, and they don't have enough parking, so.
Well, yeah, and there's people, you know, shopping. Maybe some people hanging out there while, while someone else in the group is shopping.
Well, and with, with this is where I'm, you know, we, we've been talking about revisiting parking for quite a while. And this is, especially post-COVID exterior areas, we've, we've kind of achieved a new use, and I'm wondering if this is not another example.
Okay, I appreciate your comments. Let's, let's be sure and just ask questions for the time being, and then we can discuss afterwards.
Back to the hours question, roughly seven to seven. Are there any other shops at the outlet malls that opened before ten? I think they're all ten or later, aren't they? Does anybody know one that opens early?
Joanna, you're on the spot.
They're all ten.
They're all ten.
So that's an open window there.
Yeah, seven to ten, nobody.
And this one would be closing earlier than most, at least some, at least some of the season.
I think it's seasonal. When they close, six to eight.
Yeah, it varies. Right. So I would assume that time of the morning, there'd be transient-type traffic. People just coming for coffee, obviously, going by and. So. Anybody else have questions? Specific questions? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Anybody else want to talk to us about anything? Feel free, please, we, you know.
Shay, may I ask you one thing?
Absolutely.
Quickly, just talking about parking.
We have discussed parking at restaurants in terms of the outdoor uses and how those are evolving. And we're not there with bringing that amendment forward. And I didn't say it, but your packet does note that we do recommend that the applicant and staff evaluate their parking, perhaps over the first year, similar to what we've done with other developments within the town. And if we do see that there's parking issues, that we come back and talk about potential solutions to that. So it's, it's broad, I understand, but we can always, I don't know if you remember, the Cancer Center came under two parking standards. We require that they provide a six-month and a one-year evaluation. And they, they have done that, and their actual parking flow has been well below the parking that's there. So it worked out perfectly, but if there's interest or concern, we could always talk about doing something similar here.
While you're there, there was also, I remember a while back, we were looking at the site overall, and there were some non-conformity issues with loading areas, et cetera, generally on the air. Is any of that rectified by any of this, what we're talking about today?
I don't want to speak for fire, but I do know that the outlets did contact the deputy fire chief afterwards and work on some of the concerns and issues along the back. I don't want to say that they've all been resolved. I don't know that. But there was an interest in collaborating with staff to make sure that there was some cleanup back there.
Was any of the area that we're, that is included in the area, which is maybe borderline compliant, included in parking?
No, so right now, there's no parking being proposed along the back. Like you had said, previously, there had been a proposal where we had some proposed parking in the rear that was conflicting with fire lanes, dumpsters, trailers, some fire equipment and things like that. That's not been proposed as part of this.
Where's their dumpster? I'm sorry. Where is the dumpster?
So their dumpster's gonna be on the bottom of the screen there. I don't know if I can highlight it with anything.
Southwest corner.
Is it gonna be facing the bypass?
Is that it?
Yes. That's it, so it's gonna be.
I'm here, I'm here.
Thank you.
Stay out there.
We might need you again.
Yeah, so the town's going towards front-load dumpster, so that's perfect alignment for the town to get in there with a front-load and get that. So typically, that's occurring before any type of business is open. So there shouldn't be anyone in the parking lot affecting that. Occasionally, we have situations where there are, and we just don't pick the trash up. We can't get in there. So it's to their advantage to keep that clear.
Kelly, going back to the, the lot coverage for a second, I know it's a non-conformity now, but how is adding a new building decreasing the coverage? Is it the vegetation making up?
The vegetation, so it's the vegetation. It's also the permeable pavers. So there's no permeable pavement out there right now. It is just, it's all asphalt, and so they're coming in with some permeable concrete, which is gonna free up a lot. It's also gonna help with drainage, and they've provided several pockets for some landscape islands.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I guess I do have a question for somebody about the, the operation itself regarding, it seemed like I saw some conflicting, if you will, or this was, I think, in the back and forth between staff comments and, and responses. And it was about the peak customer volume. And I, I mean, do you anticipate, I know you can't, you know, predict for sure, that that's gonna be, I think I saw something that said that would be before hours. But then, also, there was anticipation for increased foot traffic during mall hours, so. We're not sure exactly how that's gonna play out, and what, what's the thinking on pedestrian safety and all that? Because if you've got people walking from all over.
I think there's a pathway from the outlets over to that. Yes, it's gonna crosswalk straight up there. So that would take them safely.
Hopefully, they won't be just wandering around the, wandering around everywhere, which we can never control. I recognize that, yeah.
It's like walking through cars.
Yeah.
Or all of us.
Or driving through, yeah. Maybe somebody can help me. Is there some parking in the general vicinity that's like stacking park, parking for staff or something? You know, talking about in the outlets in general? Isn't there a place where there's parking? Seems like it gets used where people literally block each other in? In that general vicinity?
Well, I saw that at Starbucks in Kedumah Hills today.
You saw?
Two employees are pulled forward and two parking spots behind it. We're not losing that here.
Right.
And that would not be allowed.
Right.
With our codes.
I'm not, I'm not sure it's allowed in Kedumah Hills either, but.
Doesn't mean it's not going on.
Us just being done doesn't mean that anything is permitted.
Yeah. But that is a better part.
Well, I can take one for strong works done every day.
It seems to make parks for, just the better part.
See that all the time.
Anybody else have questions? I guess I have just a general question, which might be more for our discussion or whatever, but is there any way that you'd be amenable to making some of these changes that would, you know, make us a little more comfortable?
Sure, I, I think the most noticeable change I think to make is adding something to that elevation that faces one fifty-eight.
Right.
And I think that's a smart decision. It does face the right, we want it to look good.
Like the faux window?
Eugene's the magic maker there.
Eugene?
On that.
You're on the spot.
I thought Eugene was. I think we have a couple of options, and we're certainly hoping y'all's feedback will want you guys to be happy about it too. I think one of the options is kind of moving the Starbucks sign to the center and placing sconces on either side. The other option could be adding, the reason there's nothing there now is because that's back of the house. So if we added a window, it would have to be completely tinted, otherwise you're gonna see, you know, fossilized house stuff, I'm assuming, which will look terrible. I know we've all seen it at retailers. So, you know, that's kind of up to you.
Or it can be fake. I mean.
We prefer that.
Makes the appearance, right?
Yes, anything that makes the appearance look better.
Oh, I'm saying it can be fake, Kelly.
No, 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 it absolutely can. Like I said previously, we've had faux windows, faux shutters.
Right, shutters are nice.
So you're talking about moving the, the Starbucks sign on the east elevation to the center?
Yes.
And then sconces or something on either side? And a faux window up above?
I think, I think it would be one of the other, Eugene.
Yeah, I was thinking that we probably could, we move the logo to the, to the middle of there and add here. Well, first of all, I was adding, like as it is right now, we add a window to the right side of that corner. It'd be offset a little bit, and then we could, we could add sconces on either side of the window or either side of the logo. Depending on what preference would be. The other option would be just to move the logo to the center, and then we highlight it. And that side with a couple of sconces. I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put a window above that.
Above the, above the sign, logo, whatever.
Yeah, I think it would be too crowded. Didn't, didn't think it, I had a suggestion about shutters. We haven't used shutters anywhere, so if they add shutters, it would be kind of abnormal to that side. The faux windows would be something that we wouldn't just put a window in and black out because the inside is, of that area is usually covered with MRP, so the wall surface and all that. So it makes sense that it would just truly be a faux window, not go all the way through the space.
What is that, MRP?
Uh, it's, it's like if you put in kitchens for scrubble areas and things like that. So it's, the whole wall surface inside is all very usable wall space. So put a window on that side, and it makes it difficult for storage and shelving and things like that.
What about this like mechanical area with the back door that faces one fifty-eight? Is it possible to like, like louver that somehow or, or cover that up? So like, you know stuff is gonna pile up by that door.
So they're actually pretty good about not piling up things in that, especially in this location because it's, it's pretty prominent. Most of the Starbucks are very accessible around the entire building, so they don't have any stacking areas. They don't have anything that's, that's, that's set outside, if you will.
The mops and stuff like that, just sitting outside.
They have everything, usually all contained interiors. And then our idea for that door would be to paint out and blend it so it fits into the siding and so it doesn't stand out like sort of on our hands.
Right. And speaking of doors, how about the, the main door, if you will, the door with the transom and all? Is there anything that can be done to?
Yes, on that door, we, obviously, we added the windows above to align with the head of the other windows there. And then we, I think it was a comment that was made to.
And that's because of the requirement of door height? Or just for appearance, aesthetics?
It was partially, so we made some adjustments from, from the comments that were made to make sure our door heights were there, and we had a space of twelve inches between that. So, so we basically, that increased the height to the top of the windows, so we had a minor adjustment for all the windows, so they all lined up, all the headers and everything else. On this particular side, we did add this, I don't know what you call that thing, the little, the little roof above the door.
Like a, like an awning kind of?
Yes, no, thank you. Put the lights out.
I'm a genius.
We did add that to add a little emphasis on that particular side.
Right.
That's the, the, the one main entrance on the front where the, the exterior canopy is. That, that already had a lot of activity going on, so this felt like it needed a little bit, but not altering the, the entire facade.
Yeah, because it does get to just feel like a lot of glass, you know, and those windows are fixed.
No, we, we.
They're actually double.
There was a comment that was made about, and we're gonna make those truly double.
Okay, okay, that's nice. Okay, anybody else have questions for our panel of experts?
Actually, one more question. All the mechanical areas, air conditioning, et cetera, will be on the roof?
Correct.
Okay.
All but screen, there are baselines that you can see, there are dotted lines, that elevation showing where the roof structure is, so we would have everything above that. Below the edge, yes, sorry.
This is just a curiosity. When would the construction begin if all goes well here and moving forward? Once you have approval?
Yeah, we think it would be a good idea to wait till September or October.
Yeah.
Start construction.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons.
Remember hurricane season is September.
Even October, November, you know, so.
There's nothing like having a construction site during a hurricane. It screams wasted materials and, and complaining.
And dangerous, yeah, debris flying.
I've got one of those things wrong right now, but anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to impact the dust.
And we're hoping for a busy fall, so maybe, you know. Always, absolutely, yeah. What's the interior seating?
So Starbucks has their own team that designs the interior layouts. But because we've done so many Starbucks, every month, there's a new variation, so. We can't, but there's usually thirty seats interior-wise, plus or minus.
Okay.
The seating, so I'd imagine that that's pretty much what we have.
Right.
And the customer service area is only three hundred and some feet, is that right, square feet?
I thought it was eight, eight hundred.
Eight twenty-five.
Oh, right, I misread that then.
Most of those areas are not packed tightly. They have the lounge, I see, is the.
Right.
The balance of the twenty-two hundred, twenty-four hundred square feet is all behind the counter kind of stuff.
That's correct.
We should clarify the patio square footage. It's not eight hundred by seventy. If I'm seeing right, my eyes are not.
So that's a little smaller. There will be people out there though, I think.
Yes, in our.
Tables, umbrellas, anything like that, or just?
Tables and umbrellas. We show, we show for maximum capacity, number of tables. That's just because of, of how they all look fit. Starbucks, when it comes back in, they have oftentimes chose to use fewer tables that's in there. So we have always seen someone from eight to ten activists on the outside. So we're gonna be showing tables. That's probably not gonna be the, that we were in layout. They come back in, they add that. They don't, because this is truly covered, they don't use the umbrellas. This is not a trouble. It's a full cover.
Okay.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, you mentioned that Starbucks pretty much does their own prototypes for the interior. They had a press release yesterday that they actually are reworking their prototypes inside to encourage people to stay longer in the restaurants, and there will be some multi-level. Not that you would notice because they do their own prototypes, but do you have any idea if this will fall under a new or older prototype?
My experience says that traditionally, they usually go through all the newer processes over there. I know this is already in their queue of work-related, so I would doubt that they would go backwards. But this is also a little bit unique because it doesn't have a drive-through. So I think it goes through those scenarios of what fits best for the space.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? And maybe this is more for staff. The parking reevaluation, if you, when was the original parking study done, by the way? We reference back. And if I, am I remembering correctly, it was done in the off-season as well? Because it was done prior to the last iteration with the drive-through?
Yes.
But I.
I don't, the parking study that was done.
We don't know.
Was not done in season, but they had some projections that they had included. I did not bring the copy of the parking study from previous.
I was just curious, but that's what we're referencing, right?
Yeah, but there was also, in that study, there was a fair bit of, there was a good bit of wiggle room from the site, people onsite as compared to the people.
Driving through?
Well, no, the, the attendants and people that are in the units were the ones making the comments in the study that we were looking at, is kind of what I remember. We're fine with what the parking we have.
That's what I recall too.
And, and I can remember, as a, as a group, we had a saltier view of that information.
Saltier.
I'm gonna go with that.
So you mean tenants?
Yeah, it was, I think that it was the attendants saying, we haven't had a problem with that. And we were looking at, at a unit having two parking spaces, which is, I think, what this, what we were looking at, that, that is perhaps.
For staff.
For staff, is, 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 is lower than what had, had been getting, but we hadn't bumped there yet. For staff, is, 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 is lower than what had, had been getting, but we hadn't bumped there yet. It, what we're getting into is game where, you know, margins are becoming smaller and we're removing things from the margins and then we're marginalized. So this is the question. Saltily speaking.
Yeah.
So the, the traffic analysis that, that had previously been done, it, it was in the off-season. It was projecting numbers, but that's also the one that included, it's basically all about the drive-through. And there was a large emphasis on the drive-through. And that's also the scenario in which we, we had upwards of like twenty spaces proposed here along the fire lane in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I believe, I believe the town engineer, David Ryan, had said, had acknowledged that eliminating the drive-through certainly eliminated a lot of the conflicts that we originally had. Um, but just the nature of the business, high turnover, a lot of, and it's gonna be successful and it's gonna be great. But because it is Starbucks, there will be a parking demand associated with it. Um, and to just be cognizant of that. And I don't, I don't know that we need to go so far as to say a six-month and a one-year parking evaluation. But I would like for them to at least be open to providing some parking numbers during the end season. Um, and we'll obviously be watching as well. And if there is something that can be done to help later on, then to be open to that.
Which that would be aspirational to, I mean, there's not probably much that can be done.
Can be done once it's built, just out of curiosity.
So, um, I guess one thing that they could consider is, so this is their septic area over here. Perhaps there's opportunities to provide a couple more parking spaces in this area. Staff was not very receptive to putting required parking behind the building. But if they were to clean this up, there might be opportunities for one or two parking spaces to locate back here for staff.
Yeah.
Um, again, it would be on a case-by-case basis to see what equipment is out there, where the fire lane is. There's some drainage things back there as well. It, the last time we saw it, it was just like, here's twenty par- parking spaces just scattered along the back with no consideration to what was actually out there.
Right.
But if we had to come up with ten additional spaces, I feel confident that we could go back there, working with them, and identify those.
Okay, great, thank you.
I am interested in, in, let's call it late July, early August, red flag day numbers.
Rainy day, and rainy days too.
Yeah, you know, well, you.
Same.
Well, you know, I'm thinking more like, um, just a day when people are forced off of every place they'd rather be.
Right.
And they end up going to here as a, a point of resort, so.
I can't, yeah, and that is definitely a driving force, but it's also, there's people who want to do this regardless of weather and other options, more and more, in my opinion.
Well, and I'm kind of looking at when those two come together.
Yeah.
The people who choose to be there and the people who can't be where they want to be.
Right.
And they're looking for an amenity to collect them.
Right.
This will be a likely respite for them. I do look at, at the coffee shops that exist and they fit this, this exactly. Um, this is actually something that emergency management looks at, finding resources for people on red flag days. There's a, there's a whole campaign down this road called Love the Beach, Respect the Ocean, that is looking for partners to get people included so that, um, on days when they cannot be in the water because we choose to have them safer than unsafe, they have a place to go.
Right.
This is exactly, uh, a part, the partnership opportunity they're looking at. And it, the reality is, you know, we're gonna bump heads, um, you know. They're, they're gonna, we're gonna, there's gonna be some over-parking. And question is, how can we do it artfully?
Did you want to share numbers? I heard you say you have numbers.
Yeah, I have, I have all the placer data and I, do you guys know what it is? It basically tells you everything based on cell phone signals of how many people are there each day, when the peak periods are, all of that. And we have all the 2024 data. It's ready to know when July fourth is in the middle of the fourth weekend. You guys know how that is, you, you work here. Um, but they have certain days that are easier than others. I think in concept with how we feel about it from a retailer perspective, we do have letters from the retailers from when the burn study was done prior. They're all completely satisfied with the parking. This center is parked at six parking spaces per thousand square feet. Typically, these outlet centers are parked at four spaces per thousand square feet. We feel pretty comfortable about the parking. It's interesting, in a lot of coastal towns, most people don't want more impervious. We want the permeable parking. We, you know, that's why we're providing that. We don't want to put more asphalt down right on the water. So we feel like we're in a good balance. You know, not everything's gonna be perfect on July third or Father's Day weekend. Presumably it's a big weekend here. I mean, it probably rained in, um, two thousand twenty-four on Father's Day or something. But, um, you know, I think that you can't look at two days out of the year. It's like, I would like to have two ovens on Thanksgiving weekend, but really that's silly because I'm not gonna be using the other three hundred sixty-four days a year. That's kind of what we're looking at. We feel like it's still overpart and, and, and good standard. And we don't want to add more impervious.
Right.
That's kind of how we look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no more questions, let's discuss. Thank you, everybody.
I, I think that it makes sense moving forward to, you know, continue to look at the parking issue, but also look at, um, parking options at other places on the site. And, and, and look at this through the lens of, this isn't, i- if, if this does move forward, this is not gonna be a Starbucks issue. This is going to lean on every other parking, every other person who is going to be going to this site, which is formerly known as the Tangier Outlet Mall and will be known as something else. And all those dominoes will lean on each other and, and stand or fall.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else?
I'm, I mean, I'm ready to approve with, with the conditions from the town that we look at a little more Nagshead-style features and clean up this east side.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, so the one condition requiring a design element on the eastern elevation, for sure. We're all in agreement about that in my hearing?
Mm-hmm.
And then you said something about, you know, maybe some other stuff too, you know? I was kind of asking this question, what, what are you guys willing to do that'll make us feel better? But, you know, in talking it out, um, it just feels a little bit like it's, you know, I mean, it, it's compliant, but it's just the bare, you know, the bare minimum to some degree, which I understand. Some of the things you've said make perfect sense about how and why. Um, is there anything else in particular that we'd like to ask for, see if it's possible?
Design-wise?
Yeah, design elements or?
Um, um, plantings is another thing, and, and method of screening, especially on the margin that's gonna be in the southern edge, um, is a possibility to break up the, the space? Does that make sense?
Plantings?
Yeah, just, you know, vegetation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think we understand that there's quite a bit proposed, right?
They have.
And if it's more of a, if it's more vertically oriented, you know, not talking about a shrubbery necessarily, but trees, live oaks, et cetera, something that's super resistant and not, and not exotic, more, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, would be.
I would assume that would be in their best interest as well, otherwise they're gonna be replacing every. Okay, anybody else? Questions, comments?
I'm good.
You're good? Do I feel a motion coming on?
I'll make a motion to approve base, with the amendments that we talked about, architecturally speaking.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion?
Specific about architectural amendments or do we?
Uh, well, I think we.
What can we propose?
I think I've heard, and I believe you're trying to make a motion that would include, um, architectural relief on the eastern elevation, sounding mostly like leaning towards a faux window, if it, what we're, what we're calling a faux window.
Can I make a suggestion so we can define that?
Please, yeah.
If you don't mind going to that elevation.
Yeah, because I'm getting, I'm confused.
I always like to have the teacher as a friend so we, no guessing. So if you look at that, um, that right side, go back up just a little bit. Um, there's that logo with two sconces on either side of it. What I would propose is to keep the, um, that side up.
Okay.
Sorry. What I would propose is to keep the logo where it is, but do the two sconces beside it and then add the faux window to the, to the right-hand side over there. So we kind of match the, the logo with the sconces from both sides and then also have, um, the windows over on this right-hand side.
And how wide is that eastern elevation there?
Oh, good question.
Roughly thirty-four?
We would be on the.
What was that, boss?
How, how wide is that eastern elevation, you know, from south to north stretch?
Let me blow it up.
To the right of the logo?
Or the whole thing?
Yeah.
I can't get enough.
No, I can't see that.
Um, it's twenty-seven, but about thirty feet-ish.
Is, is one faux window enough? I mean, it, I, I don't know. I'm not a construction person. Just for, for aesthetics. I mean, it's got the logo, the sconces we're talking about.
How big is the logo?
Wall-mounted lights.
How big is the logo?
Okay, can I, so the logo is.
A separate.
It's kind of its own separate beast. It comes under the signage regulations, which we're still working on, the amount of wall signage that can be allocated. So we're not gonna really know the size of that wall signage until we get to that place. So this is proposed and what's desired, but that may not actually be what's there.
So you'd have the logo, however big it is, with, with two sconces, which are wall-mounted lights, is that right?
Yeah, so I would, so if that, if that logo reduces in size, it'll just be centered on that same spot. So the sconces will still be, um.
But then if everything gets smaller, it's gonna be a completely different look.
You want to scale it, right? Put them down for that side of the logo.
Yeah.
So, so that side, I would imagine is gonna be your larger logo. And where they, where Starbucks, again, experience says that they'll want that on the front, there's the roadway.
Right.
So that's probably gonna be your bigger one. The other one on the side may reduce in size if they have to scale back.
Just to clarify, we have a motion on, on the table, on the floor, and we're discussing.
We're discussing, yeah.
And a second.
And a second, yes.
Okay, so there's two, two things I probably should have asked about before, but number eleven, Kelly, where you say that they have twenty-nine point seven five square feet of window area. When you were discussing that, were you saying that was, it was adequate or you would prefer more or less? Or what were you saying?
So thirty is the cap. Thirty is the, we do not want anything greater than thirty. And they pushed it to that thirty, so just recognizing that it, it's on the tip of desire, of being undesirable.
But now we're asking for another window.
But it is still compliant.
Now we're asking for another window.
No, the thirty, so the thirty square feet was for the individual windows.
Oh, 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 okay, gotcha.
So no individual window should be greater than thirty square feet. So these are coming in at twenty-nine point seven five. When you look at our residential design standards, those windows are generally smaller. They're, you know, the smaller double hung residential style windows. Um, the other piece is that, uh, here where we have the door and the transom or the window above, um, they did provide that minimum twelve-inch gap in between the two. Um, so again, they meet the standard. It's just a lot of glass.
Okay.
So it goes back to this thing where from staff perspective, they've technically met the minimum. Um, we talk about how sometimes with our commercial design standards, we have an idea of what that's gonna look like, but someone else can meet the minimum and it's really not what was desired. And some, I, I feel like this is on the cusp of that. This meets our requirements, but it doesn't really look like a traditional Nagshead commercial building.
Okay, and that would apply to number fourteen too, where we say, we need to incorporate character or visual interest in design, character to design. You can incorporate one or more of these following elements.
Correct.
Exposed rafter tails, gable bracket, gable brackets, workable shutters or column trim. And they've proposed one.
Right, again, bare minimum. I can't in good conscience recommend denial. I just wish we had more desirable architectural elements, but I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, column trim, is that?
I mean, column trim is really easy. They have several columns.
So just as a, as a clarification, the, the trellis piece, it's not a trellis piece, the canopy piece outside, those columns will be clad, um, wood trims, not gonna be next to your poles or anything else. So that is all clad and detailed out to meet those same kind of design criteria.
Okay, and then, um, gable bracket? I'm not even sure what that is, so.
I don't really see an opportunity for those here.
Yeah, no.
Okay, or workable shutters, I mean, that, yeah.
I mean, I would love some workable shutters. Nothing says Nagshead like a shutter, but, um, I don't think that's their desired aesthetic.
You start with shutters, you're gonna, there's gonna be a lot of shutters if you start, you know.
Okay. Still set them as a forward.
So it's, yeah, I mean, it's a matter of, I think we all feel a little bit the same way, but if it meets the, you know, if it's compliant, it's compliant. Um, and I think that they're certainly showing a willingness to do something, what they can, and it's still gotta look like a Starbucks, right?
There's another one there. We want it to fit in here as well, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So right up at the beginning of the summary, the, the staff says, if you're gonna approve it, we recommend these two conditions. One is architectural amendments. We've talked about that and agreed to that. And two is the parking traffic monitoring. Advocate works with the town staff to monitor and see if anything needs to happen, so.
That is, and that, I'm, I'm in agreement. I think that we.
Those, both those things.
And I don't know how to word that in a, in any kind of emotion.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, yeah, it's, it's already worded. I think Lily's got it. That's what we would, um.
Yeah, perfect.
Recommend. Did you want to amend your, because I don't think you did include the parking, or did you?
I did not.
No.
Okay.
And I can amend it to also include parking and traffic monitoring. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, sure, yeah.
So we have an amendment to his motion to include those two things, the architectural, the additional architectural design.
Right.
And the parking evaluation, and I ha- and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor then? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to action item E two, which is a request for initiation of a zoning map and text amendments as it relates to the Nagshead Municipal Complex property.
You all have a good day, thank you.
And the SPDC Village in Nagshead Institutional Zoning designation. Goodbye, y'all, thank you.
We've got our room back now we can talk about them. Kidding.
All right, let's see. So this is, um, as you know, the planning staff can't just initiate a text amendment. Uh, the Board of Commissioners can initiate it, the Planning Board can initiate it, or a property owner can initiate it. So this is something that we've, um, become aware of. And so we're here today to ask the Planning Board to initiate it. Is this, I feel like it's reverberating.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's been some ringing. Something changed in the room. If there's just feedback somewhere.
Maybe push the mic away from you a little bit.
I don't think that it's you necessarily though, or that mic.
It's unclear who it is, but you can hear the ping.
This whole extended mic was for me.
Oh.
During board meetings.
Oh.
Anyway.
It's your fault.
Kelly, you're just the right size.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Will?
All right, well, I'm sorry for making it ring.
You're fine. I don't hear it right now.
Okay, maybe this is the right distance.
Can we see the visual?
Yes. And there's several visuals.
That helps me a lot when I'm, we're talking about wanting to rezone, stuff like that. I'd like to see the space in relation to the ones around it and where the, the line is between the two different zones.
Sure, okay. So, uh, before we even start talking about it, let's kind of orient. So, um, in the, in the inset map over here, you can see this is Town Hall. And our parking area over here, this is the driveway, the cut-through that goes from Beach Road, um, to 158. Here is, um, it used to be a fitness facility for employees. Um, probably a year and a half, two years ago, we realized there were some mold, um, issues in there. We did an evaluation and it was not worth saving. So we've temporarily moved our fitness equipment over to the old Village Real. over to the old Village Realty B B and T building, which it's fine to be there until EMS is ready to demo the building, so.
Oh, it's going to be demoed?
Yes, so we're under a little bit of a time constraint, because, um, we do want to rebuild the fitness center um, prior to EMS, Dare County EMS, um, starting site work over there.
Where's the fitness center in relation to the fire department?
So, let's see here.
Can you blow that up a bit?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so here's the fire department, and the current, currently, we have our fitness center in this building.
Isn't that the bank building?
Yeah.
So the town owns that now.
Yeah, right, I knew that.
And so when our little fitness building over here um, got in bad shape, we relocated our equipment to here. But we have to get all that equipment out into a new facility before Dare County EMS starts.
We can use that facility, by the way.
They have a sauna in the vault. No, I'm just kidding.
Don't get stuck in there.
So this green, this color of green or yellow, is the Village Institutional Zoning District, and so it encompasses Town Hall, the fire station, and, um, the wastewater facility here.
Is that quilt shop in there, too?
Um, so no, the quilt shop...
Is right next to...
Is, yeah, the quilt shop is right across from Sea Chase, and that's in the Village Commercial District.
Okay, institutional, right.
Yeah, so here you can see the split, here's the fire department institutional.
Mm-hmm.
Here's, um...
The bank?
The bank, and the quilt shop that's in the commercial zoning. Um, Town Hall is in the institutional, and then this hatched area over here is R three. It's high-density residential. So, some history on that. Um, well, I don't, I honestly, the Town Hall complex has always been split-zoned. Um, but if you remember where the cell tower is now, that used to be a water tower. So it was fitting for the town water tower to be on the town municipal site.
Is that in that red square? Up there?
Uh, the cell tower...
Next to the beach road?
That's the access.
No, this is, um, this is beach access parking right here.
Okay.
Let's see if I can... Looking at this map might be a little easier, hang on.
So that tower's in that hatched area?
It is.
Okay.
So the tower is in between the boardroom, which is right in here.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, let me...
You can go outside and look.
I was going to say, just, just point.
It's cold.
Do you care for a field trip?
It's cold and windy.
Let's go outside.
Have a field trip.
Maybe they'd make the meeting shorter, but anyway.
Everyone get in their car.
So this one, this might be helpful.
No, you're fine.
Um, you can see the different, they're different colors, but you can see the designation and the improvements under them. Um, so Town Hall here, this is the fitness center, this is a garage, like an annex garage for public services, so that they can have some things here. Uh, this used to be the water tower, which is now the cell tower. Um, and then this is the boardroom, and the, um, parking and beach access parking is over here.
Okay.
Um, so I wasn't here when this happened, but Andy was. Um, in the R three zoning designation, the water tower was seen to be, uh, part of the municipal complex, part of the municipal facility. So in R three, when we allowed, um, for municipal, the water tower made sense. But there were some, um, telecommunications on that water tower that it, we had an opportunity to go ahead and have a cell tower put there and maintain those telecommunications as well. So we actually, a long time ago, amended the R three to allow telecommunication towers, because of how that happened. The water tower transitioned to the cell tower. So it's been okay as R three, um, until now, when, um, in preparation for doing the site, doing the survey work for our fitness center, um, it, it, in that scenario, these improvements in the Village Institutional would have to adhere to the village lot coverage, which is seventy percent. And all the improvements in the R three would have to adhere to the R three lot coverage, which is thirty-three percent. So I believe we're already over that thirty-three percent in the R three. Um, but you can look at, uh, the town manager and Board of Commissioners recently went through a process to do a, a Town Hall master plan, looking at all of their facilities within the town, and their life expectancy, and when we may need to do repairs or replacement. And part of that included reworking some things here on the, the Town Hall complex site. And so that included this fitness center, which, this is just a rendering that the consultants did, it's not a survey by any means, but you can see where that, um, the annex garage for public services would go away, um, because in a perfect world, the police station would move to where the fire station is now. The fire station would go to a recently purchased property up the road, um, four two-two-two, South Croatan Highway. It used to be owned by Mighty Wind Methodist Church, so the fire station might go there. Police station would shift to where the fire department is. And so for the police department is now, would become the Board of Commissioners' room, meeting space, and a garage area for public services. So it is a master plan, like ten years out, but nonetheless. Um, I guess wishful thinking. But the one thing that has to happen pretty soon is the fitness center. Um, and so the proposal would be to put this fitness center in this location that you can see here directly across from Town Hall, and to rework the parking. Um, the Board of Commissioners has seen the preliminary plans for the fitness center, and there was a desire that if we're already doing this fitness center, to do kind of what we did at, um, the Epstein Street Beach Access, and put two apartments above it for staff housing as needed. Um, so that's why there's a little bit more parking there than you see now, because there was a need to have parking for fitness, and a space for some apartments, um, for staff as needed, so. All that being said, this is more than thirty-three percent lot coverage in the R three zoning district. And while it's always been split-zoned, we do feel like it ideally should all be one zoning designation, and since all the facilities on this site are institutional and related to Town Hall, it makes sense to extend this Village Institutional District um, to encompass this section of R three. So the request at this time would be for the Planning Board to allow staff to go ahead and start the process of rezoning this area here, which we can look at the zoning map, is going to be the hatched area on this map to Village Institutional. So that the entire municipal complex is all one zoning district, and it's all Village Institutional, which is going to give us that seventy percent lot coverage, which when you look in context of the long-range plan for the Town Hall complex, just makes sense to have that. Um, so right now, we're just asking for initiation, we're not asking that you approve the rezoning.
Because you'll have to have public hearings and all that, you know.
Right, we'll have to go through the whole process, um...
It's just that hatched area, that's the only piece we're...
Yes.
Thinking about initiating a zoning change on?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Right.
Um, this is residential here, that's R three, and it should stay R three. Um, but where we transition from residential to municipal, it makes sense to include that in the institutional designation. Um, the only other part of that, which I did want to include for your consideration, is Village Institutional, um, doesn't allow telecommunication towers. And we would not want telecommunication towers anywhere in the village. Um, but there's a path to do a text amendment that says telecommunication towers as an accessory to a municipal complex. So it would be the rezoning itself, as well as the text amendment, to make this site all institutional, and all the improvements on the site to be allowed within the district.
Wow, and the fact that it would be tied to municipal clearly says there's not going to be any more towers.
Correct, there will not be any, there's no avenue for there to be anymore.
As, as well, telecommunication towers, the nature of the beast is changing quite a bit. They're looking like utility pools now, instead of everything else, yeah.
Might not be much of an issue, but it doesn't hurt to...
Well, I'm wondering if we, if, if there is, if we do this, is that hedging in a different direction? Are we creating an opportunity for somebody to put in utility pools in, in the new version someplace else that we don't want?
Um, so...
Okay, if that, just, just looking that way.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't think so. So we're a major communication tower, so you can co-locate on our tower, but there can never be another tower.
Okay, because there's a, the utility, as it is right now, the smaller ones that I'm speaking about are, they can be put in the utility right away.
Yes, so small cell wireless can go pretty much anywhere.
Right, but, and, and there's going to be a point at which somebody's going to raise an eyebrow about that, but, um, I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity, maybe, to look at that now, and maybe add that?
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't the fact that this would be tied only to municipal would, would limit that?
Well, no, what, what I'm saying is, um, create a carve-out for these towers and have them fall into two categories, major and minor.
So it's already like that.
Yeah.
So we are, we only allow major communication towers, and then small cell wireless. And when small cell wireless came on board, I guess it's been five, six years ago, um... I remember from my perspective at the time, there was very little that you could do to regulate those, um, similar to some other uses.
Okay.
So the town attorney drafted the tell, the small cell wireless, they're allowed to be in the right-of-way, pretty much carte blanche. If it's on private property, the town does have some say.
Okay.
But not a whole lot.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think this makes sense, the, you know, the, in keeping with the intent of the, um, Institutional District. Supposed to be for everybody's benefit and all of that, you know, I mean, I, I think it makes perfect sense. I don't see any problem.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Okay, yeah.
That's a move.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Me has made a motion to approve, and so this would be the, um, to initiate the text amendment.
Yes.
And then also the zoning, the change to allow for the, okay, both, right? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, great, moving on then. Thank you, Kelly, uh, David first, a second.
I, I did.
There might have been more than one, I heard. Okay, great. Okay, and Kelly's going to stay up there and report on the B O C actions from March fifth. Please.
Sure, um, the Art and Culture Committee, which is under the Planning Department, gave their presentation to the Board of Commissioners, was really well-received. We talked about how well things had gone this past season, and some ideas for what we want to do next season. There's a couple of new things that we have. I, I won't go into a whole lot of detail, but there might be a Yappy Hour at the Satterfield Dog Park that we're going to start doing. And there's, um... So, and we have a lot of...
Look, Yappy Hour sent her out of the room.
I know, she's on.
Well, that was napping.
Yeah, oh, okay, got it.
Um, and then the other new initiative that we have is we have a lot of fitness opportunities, um... Fitness Fridays, uh, Yoga Tuesdays, things like that, but we're incorporating some kids' fitness as well, it's called Kids Move More. So some kids' activities, um, to go along with that. So it's exciting to see things like that coming along, um... There, on the consent agenda, we did have the request for public hearing for the fueling stations. So the Board of Commissioners will hear that at their April, um, meeting. And we had Chris Tremblay, our planner, here with you guys not too long ago, talking about the Dark Skies Bright Stars Initiative. Um, and so we put a, actually, no, sorry. We are putting a resolution together for Dark Skies Bright Stars, uh, but that's not what this resolution was. This resolution, uh, was for the adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, so. Um, and then we had the appointment of Basil to the Planning Board, and I think that's it.
Perfect timing.
When David Ryan gave an update on the beach nourishment, can you tell us when the next one is planned? Oh, to preserve, number thirteen.
What was the question?
Um, number thirteen, when David Ryan presented an update on the town's next beach nourishment project. I was just curious.
I will send you an email back on that, um, I want to say twenty-six, but I'm not... I don't know what month, and I don't, I don't know all the details.
Twenty-six is fine, you don't have to send anything, but I was just curious.
I'm, I'm interested in the, in the verbiage on the taper as well.
Yes.
So, um, again, this will not be as technical as David Ryan, but we were, you know, previously, uh, we had to stop it a little north of our southern boundary to taper it to where it ended. And I think the Park Service is amenable to working with us to bring nourishment all the way down to the south, and then taper onto the Park Service property.
Makes sense.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Town updates? Moving on then to our discussion item H, discussion of strategic plan, action item two-point-two.
That sounds real.
I know.
H.
And Deputy Planning Director Joe Costello. Good morning.
Good morning, let me just get up there.
I did, mhm.
He likes being down there by himself.
Well, you know, it, 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 it is what it is. I, I'm embracing all of it.
And it puts you up there so you can jump up there and point at stuff if you need to.
Well, it puts me out of frame for most of that stuff over there, which is great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got a little cold, so try my best to not cough. Um, so this is going to be a deep dive into the Commercial Outdoor Recreation District. Um, it's on our strategic plan to look at incompatible uses within, basically between the comprehensive plan and our U D O, um, um, for the Commercial Outdoor Recreation District. So we're going to look at the allowable uses. I try to take sort of a, I guess, just an inquisitive, bigger-picture approach to looking at the comprehensive plan, generally what we thought the corridors should look like, um, what our development plans were originally in the comprehensive plan. Looking at what kind of existing regulations we have within the district. And then looking at other plans such as our pedestrian plan. The U S um, one fifty-eight access management plan. Um, the beach road study which was done, I think in two thousand and six. And just other presentations um, that have occurred, um, and, and sort of what staff has sort of considered in the area. And then looking at existing development that's occurred or is planning, or is being planned to occur. So, um, hopefully, you know, it's sort of a comprehensive look at what our vision for the area is, what kind of regulations we have, existing development, planned development. And then sort of just an objective analysis on strengths, weaknesses, and some preliminary recommendations. To sort of address the strategic plan item. And correct that incompatibility between what we wanted to be and what we sort of are regulating and what's allowed. So here's the cord, um, we've talked about the hotel overlay district, it's kind of similar, similar boundary. The blue is the cord, which you, you know, see, we, we've talked about the outlets quite a bit. It starts up on Forbes and then sort of continues down and then around the causeway. At, at the time, the cord was established, it was really to group all those outdoor recreation uses that were sort of proliferating around town, to my understanding, we wanted to group them. We thought they were kind of incompatible, at least some of them, with residential uses, so like the one um, over here on the beach road, that putt-putt would be like non-conforming. And some, some, so, you know, that, this district was developed. I don't usually read PowerPoints word for word, but I'm gonna read this. The Commercial Outdoor Recreation Uses Overlay Zoning District, um, if you, if you look in the comp plan, was to provide a set of comprehensive land use regulations for the operation of commercial outdoor rec uses while protecting the residentially zoned areas of the town. All commercial outdoor rec uses proposed within this overlay district shall be subject to procedures, standards, and guidelines specified in the following sections. In addition to other applicable rules, regulations, permit requirements, in case of conflict with regulations in the underlying zoning district, the more restrictive requirements apply within the overlay zoning district, all permitted and conditional, conditional uses in the C two zoning district, which are on a separate lot and not in combination with any of the below-listed commercial outdoor recreation uses shall be allowed. So, the big takeaway there is we're allowing these commercial uses in this district, but anything else you can do in C two, you can do here. Um, it was established in nineteen ninety-five, all of that area that I showed here, the underlying is C two. Um, just to kind of, I guess, talk through some of the terms we use in our comprehensive plan, um, it's sort of divided up by character areas. Character areas provide both the vision and the policy direction for the desired use, design, infrastructure, and other elements that new development must consider. Character area planning provides the policy direction that regulations must work to achieve. And the town's ordinances, development standards, design standards, and other programs should work together to allow achievement of character area goals. Um, we also have these other two terms which are kind of key, so I'll read them. Development plan, it describes the hopes and concerns for each character area and further outlines the future desires for land use types, form, height, density, architectural characteristics, important infrastructure, and desired bike and pedestrian connections. In addition, the development plan will outline development considerations such as regulatory constraints and compatibility. Then we have this other thing that pops up throughout our comp plan called activity nodes. These are specific areas within comp, within the character areas, they're um, areas that are anticipated for future concentration of uses that serve as destinations or hubs of activity for the surrounding area. These are characterized by higher intensity uses, compact development patterns, walkability, and a higher standard of architectural and site design. Activity centers include a mix of residential and commercial uses including retail, dining, and office. Areas designated as activity centers should be planned in a way to encourage pedestrian activity. So, this is a blown-up image, so sorry for the blurriness, but this is straight from our comp plan where we have our Whalebone Character Area, and then two activity nodes, the Soundside Activity Node and the Whalebone Activity Node. Um, you can see the Soundside Activity Node pretty much overlaps with a large amount of the Commercial Outdoor Recreation District boundary. Not the causeway, but, you know, most of that Forbes area, so. Hopefully, there's a flow where the vision set out for the Soundside Activity Node and the Whalebone Character Area or um, cord and your, and your zoning is sort of a tool to implement the vision that's sort of put out in the comprehensive plan. Um, this is the table from our comprehensive plan, very specifically denotes uses and sort of development that we think is appropriate for that Soundside Activity Node. We have listed in there multifamily, hotel boutique hotel, accessory residential to commercial, mixed-use, commercial, offices and accessory use, retail, restaurant, no drive-throughs, walk-up or sit-down, personal service establishments, indoor entertainment, indoor/outdoor recreation, water-dependent uses such as pure boardwalk, accessory water-dependent use to commercial use, mixed-use or hotel, outdoor events, festivals, amusements, and then sort of separately gallery, museum, institutional such as park school, nonprofits, gymnasium, fitness. So walkability is featured in this Soundside Activity Node section of the comp plan. The area is envisioned to be a destination where people can park their car and enjoy exploring the surrounding area by foot or bike. This area is imagined as primarily commercial with a mix of retail, restaurant, and high degree of walkability. Future development should work to increase bike and pedestrian connections from the Soundside to the Whalebone Junction Core and other residential areas to the north and south. So this was done about twenty years ago, um, like N C State. Students kind of did this beach road study, but they touched a lot on sort of this circulation between our Whalebone Activity Node and our Soundside Activity Node. You can see, you know, there's sort of this planned boardwalk, there's sidewalks proposed on both sides of the street throughout. Sort of incorporated that larger mountain seed trail. Show a sort of a regional trail or a statewide concept trail more than just a local connection as well.
Is the center of that circle the shopping center?
Um, the circle, this shopping center is sort of the, the white buildings in the um, half-mile walk radius. The circles sort of show what a quarter-mile walk would be and a half-mile walk would be. Which is typically considered like what the average person would walk comfortably. Um, so just north of that. Um, this is our pedestrian plan which was sort of recently updated, this is the list of prioritized projects. And their projected costs and how big they, how long, how many linear feet that project individually would be. So this is, this list mapped within this area, um, you see the yellow are the existing sidewalks, sort of, you know, my mouse doesn't show up on the slide, but you s, you know, you can see the yellow is the existing sidewalks, and then orange are the planned sidewalks that you see here on our prioritization list. Sort of mapped out, what does that look like, if everything that's planned and programmed to receive funding is built out, this is sort of our pedestrian infrastructure, as you can see, we, you know, plan to add that connection along Lakeside. Um, the sort of multi-use path will be extended up Bay Meadow. We have the connection planned to Sugar Creek, but not really further into the causeway. This is another, um, sort of larger plan, I've just sort of zoomed in on this, um, specific area, but this is in our STIP. We're not funded, the STIP is a, basically a plan that our, um, ARPO region uses to prioritize funding throughout all of the um, counties and towns in our jurisdiction and um, it's a prioritization process of funding, the U S one fifty-eight access management plan is in that, is in the STIP, but it's not funded, so basically, we're at least five years away from receiving funding for this, if it does ever receive funding. But it would be a major change for the area where the sort of dual-turning lane in the middle becomes a vegetated median, you know, it shows sort of like a bike lane area on one side. I don't know if this will ever be funded, it may, it may not, it's certain, it's in the town's strategic plan to advocate that it's funded, um, it's something the town has supported. Uh, I don't, you know, we'll see. But what I'm hoping to do is again, sort of stack up, this is what we've planned, this is sort of all of our existing plans and activity for this Commercial Outdoor Recreation District, to try to give a full picture of just development in, um, in the area. This is a boardwalk concept that was done in two thousand and fifteen by the town. I've learned a little bit more about sort of the history of that, but just thought it was interesting, you know, we sort of have been considering this connection and, and flow from the beach road study again, a decade later. Um, sort of looked at what it would take to possibly connect these areas, um, in our, in our outdoor recreation businesses and our existing retail uh, via boardwalk. And then we have, um, something recent, yeah.
What was that green line behind the outlets?
Yeah, that is a proposed Soundside Boardwalk alignment, um, by the town of Nags Head.
To look at the back of the outlets? That makes no sense.
To look the other way.
But it's also the other side of that is, imagine all the waterfront behind the, the outlet mall.
Yeah, I mean.
That it is, 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 is a little, it wouldn't be designed that way today.
No, it should be designed like the waterfront shops in Duck, and then have a boardwalk behind it, and that would be lovely. No, we're not there.
Yeah, and, you know, I guess, I, you know, I think it, it would provide circulation, um, that I think would be beneficial for the corridor, I, I see the point, you know, they're not facing, you know, the businesses are not facing the rear. But there are sort of recreational paths, and I, I do see the, um, the alignment with our vision for the area and the comp plan. And then we do have a boardwalk going in from the Soundside Events Center. This is permitted, it's, it's received camo permits, it's received, um, site plan approval. So we will have a boardwalk soon going in that does some of this.
Joe, would the boardwalk behind the events site, there's a soundside, would eventually that connect up to the, to the outlet malls?
Um, not as currently, um, permitted, uh, or proposed, there's concepts, you know, from, from this, this past concept that shows that, but you know, I guess I'm building up to that.
I just have a like a, I'm surprised the town would wanna put just that
I won't be here.
Boardwalk behind the outlet mall, and that seems like private property, like what, that's something like the outlet mall should build a boardwalk there, like I'm surprised that's on our plan, because it's really just for that one commercial site.
Actually, the boardwalk goes from Forbes all the way down over to Sugar Creek.
As, oh, okay.
Right, that initial consideration was to, you know, just if you look sort of at the top of the go-karts, this cord area, and then, you know, look, thinking back to the, what we have said we wanted as our vision for development and our comprehensive plan, and for this specific area to be highly walkable, connected.
So it would all connect.
Cohesive.
It could eventually, right?
It was a concept, um, plan, you know.
So you don't like it, Molly?
Ten years ago.
I just, I just think it should all connect, or.
Oh, it will.
Right, it would eventually if it ever happened, I would imagine. You know, you, you go places where there's these walks that aren't always going somewhere beautiful every minute.
It looks like that one, Alex, standalone.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, no.
No, I know, and.
Those can take us there.
Yeah, I'll, you know, I, I'll, I'll try to, um,
Sorry, we're getting.
I'm sorry, I know.
I know, it's a lot, um, but that's why I'm sort of trying to layer up, you know, all the different sort of proposals and development that have kind of occurred over, over the years, um, for the area, and I think it's more of a concept, you, you know, the exact alignment. I'm not sure that was the intent, I, I don't wanna speak for whoever drew it, but I just think the idea was to sort of show this connection between these commercial uses.
Yeah, well, Dave, David can go up there and point.
No, you're good.
I mean, uh, walkability is a big emphasis, it seems like.
Yeah, for the area.
Just boardwalk for the sake of something to walk, to connect stuff.
That way somebody can park and then walk.
That's right.
Right.
We won't, you know,
Yeah.
overcrowd a parking area.
Or have.
They have more options to park away and then walk to it.
And it's good for people to walk.
It's a little more integrated as an entire district, as a, as an activity node
Right.
than sort of these individual businesses where you're sort of parking, you're getting out, you're doing that thing, you're getting back in your car, you're driving next door to the next lot if you wanted to do that. Maybe, you know, a better circulation between both the activity nodes as the comprehensive plan sort of envisioned, um, would be beneficial to those businesses, but also, you know, a, 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 a good thing for the people, um, that, you know, tourists, visitors, whoever.
You know, you know, also tying into the beach road walk eventually, you know, creating connectivity between these nodes, the walkways through a crosswalk.
Right.
Because that's, that's another big, you know, issue is we, you know, you can't get across the bypass anywhere.
Yeah. No, I agree, um. So again, this, we're moving from sort of plans and concepts and, you know, maybe that was, uh, you know, there's sort of a lot, um.
You gotta, you gotta start with one bite.
Yeah.
It's the elephant we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah. We approved this bo, boardwalk, so now it's, portion of that is not theoretical, you, you know, the sidewalk connections go sort of north and then all the way to the sort of Harvey site there, you can see. So, um, I just sort of, this is a, a reference map, I put these numbers to sort of highlight some different areas within each, um, portion of the cord, the Commercial Outdoor Recreation District. So one, two, three, four, five, I kind of separated that northern district as, as one sort of district, just, just, hey, what's, what's here, so, you know, now we have what's planned, what, what we say we want our vision is for this area, and then our ordinance, you know, what we sort of allow, um, and then looking at, well, what have we sort of talked about as far as other infrastructure pedestrian-wise? What have we permitted recently, this boardwalk? So now it's on the ground, um, you know, we have a good amount of existing outdoor recreation businesses on the north side, and then we have the, um, pickleballs courts, um, that were recently approved to, to be in the, um, Soundside Events Center. Sort of the central area is, you know, the Harvey's, uh, public access site down to uh, the sort of condominium there, um, before the causeway. Um, you know, I would say, care, you have a lot of outdoor rec, um, businesses, you have the outlets, you sort of have this high-intensity residential. They are not, you have the, um, pedestrian walkway, but uh, I mean, the, the multi-use path, but not all the way to Sugar Creek right now.
Is the raceway open, is that like an operational business?
I don't know, I mean, it always seems closed.
The race, the Nags Head Raceway, like is that still a functioning business?
Um.
I don't.
Yeah. And some of those, you know, I've, yeah, they're clo, they seem closed, um, but I'm not sure if it's.
Right, just curious, yeah.
I haven't seen much activity there at all.
No.
When I drove there, it seemed pretty desolate, but.
Yeah.
But it was.
In the causeway, you kind of have a mix of lower-intensity uses, you have a lot of water sport rentals, you have restaurants, you have a couple of single-family homes, um, there too. Um, so overall, the strengths, I would say, you know, we have this really good grouping of outdoor recreation businesses, of recreational businesses. We have our Soundside Events Center that's developing more rapidly, we're close to hotels, cottage courts, single- We're close to hotels, cottage courts, single family rentals. The town owns a lot of key properties such as the Wellbone Park. Now I said, Public Pier, Harvey Soundside Park, um and then those Catfish Farm properties which are
What's a catfish farm?
It's those, you know, that's sort of what we refer to colloquially as that bend in the causeway up. Those are all town owned.
Catfish farms.
Yep, it's, I don't know where the name came from.
Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but Is there any possibility that there could ever be like
Catfish farms.
pedestrian access along the ca- like the entire causeway? Is that, is it even wide enough? Is it a possibility or just curious?
Possible, I just don't think the town has, um you know, I think it's sort of limited return on what the what the cost of construction and and doing that would be for how many people would walk it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's certainly possible.
Cause I would can see people coming from the beach road and going down and coming to all those restaurants on their bicycles or, you know, it's
Yeah.
It's kind of a cool spot.
Yeah.
But anyways, just interrupting you again.
Catfish farms.
Yeah, no, I I I welcome that.
Oh, you didn't notice.
I love hearing Andy talk about the ta- catfish farm. Trying to almost explain the language without really tethering it to any reality.
Didn't even know there were catfish.
There is no explanation. There is no explanation for the name.
I don't, I think it was a f- a kind of a Narnia plan.
So again, that some of the strengths, you know, we have key properties that we own. It's close to hotels. We have a lot of outdoor recreation businesses here. Um some potential weaknesses of the district or threats, you know, again, referencing back to what we want it to be in looking at that comp plan and the activity node. We allow the full range of C-two uses. So redevelopment could occur as residential housing, vacation rentals or non-cord related commercial uses, which could break up that continuity look and feel. Um which would run counter to the comprehensive plan as as far as what we've set out. Um so again, in the strategic plan, our our sort of task is to look at what we have in the comp plan and what we allow by zoning and try to have the zoning implement the comprehensive plan. Or maybe we say, you know, we're okay with allowing it to be something different. Then maybe eventually we would look at our comprehensive plan um and say, maybe that's not the vision we want for this area, but um there's also a potential for development that reduces the visibility of the sound. There's a lack of pedestrian connectivity to and from the district from points east across the the bypass and then to the north. But we, you know, have that plan to be connected. Um and then there's a challenge potentially of new outdoor rec related businesses um due to the cost of land development and and just doing business. Um you know, if those outdoor businesses were to sort of become residential developments or any other C-two use, which is our most broad, general, commercial um category, I mean, there there's a lot, we'll all get to that in a minute. So what are some opportunities? Pedestrian connectivity, we could remove some uses that um potentially we don't wanna see there that would preserve the district continuity in the long term. Um we just created this multifamily ordinance. We said in our develop, in our comp plan that multifamily is appropriate. Maybe we allow that as an accessory use to support, um you know, a- as an accessory use for for these outdoor rec uses. Um we have the Soundside Events Center there, they're developing this boardwalk um and and, you know, have events that bring in a lot of people. That's a potential opportunity to um, you know, al- create a more cohesive sort of outdoor mall experience across the whole activity node instead of just at that event center. Um and also there's opportunity to maybe increase connection to the sound, the natural landscape, uh whether that be via boardwalk or or other things. We're, you know, we're working on installing the living shoreline at the Harvey site um as part of our SBR area um shoreline management plan. But maintaining that sort of visual connection is important for the district. And so um a couple of recommendations would potentially be to remove some non-compatible uses from the C-two district within the cord and then maybe expand allowable accessory uses to help support those commercial outdoor recreation businesses viability. All permitted and special uses currently in the C-two, underlying C-two district are allowed, so and then, you know, this next bullet, currently when any non-rec related use is combined with a rec use, the non-rec use must be accessory and subordinate. And in this instance, which basically our zoning ordinance says, you can only have a concession, amusement arcade, restaurant, retailer, single family dwelling, accessory to a commercial outdoor business. So if you have one of those water sport businesses or putt putt, you can have concessions or amusement arcade or restaurant if it's accessory too. So here are some of the things, just that, you know, you can look at our zoning ordinance and I'll follow up with a report that's a little more cumbersome, I'll try to um reduce it before I send it out, but just food for thought. Here's a couple that I, you know, i- if you look at our C-two, you could by right do with with other restrictions, do a large residential dwelling in that underlying C-two. Um you can do small multifamily, you can do large multifamily, you can do um a duplex, you can do an automotive automobile repair shop, you can do bail bonds. You can have a funeral home, you can have a car wash, um you could have a commercial crop production indoor. Um and then I just put on there, um the outdoor stands, which are accessory to shopping centers and grid developments is maybe an opportunity um to allow for core businesses to have, to sort of activate that walk and just get people walking and and sort of patronizing these places um to keep them there as opposed to at least when we look at our comp plan, um it would run counter to think, you know, the putt putt could then become a automobile repair shop. And the neighboring adjacent by right could be a car wash. So hopefully this is a little bit proactive, um rather than sort of waiting for that text amendment and site plan where everyone's shocked.
Is it down zoning to take away a use?
It would be, yes.
Yeah.
So can we even do it?
Well
We're just talking about it.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about it. And um, you know, maybe there's other things to incentivize the core district to be stronger or or do these other things, like the town investment that we're doing in these sidewalks and try to make it more cohesive to support without maybe touching the uses. But sort of up to the discretion of of you all in the in the VOC to um consider that. And that's where, you know, I think another big piece of this, I try to, you know, sort of look at it more cohesively is there there's an opportunity to create a more accessible welcoming environment, um a welcoming environment. Um you know, we say in our comp plan, we'd like to improve the connection between the Soundside and Wellbone activity nodes. Um we should probably, which we plan to do is connect that northern neighborhoods to the south. But it's not just about having sort of the sidewalk run um from north to south. I think making the walk more interesting, um more comfortable. It's sort of been proven um that that creates more activity, whether that's public art, shade trees, commercial stands. Um are all sort of possibilities to make that walk. If you've if you've walked that stretch, you know, you feel pretty exposed. It's a long walk, you gotta be pretty committed to going to a specific location from a residential area. And so some shade, breaking that up with um some visual interest would would sort of support that kind of vision that we have in our comp plan.
You're talking along a multi-use path?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is pretty stark. Yeah.
It's what starts.
At least when you look at the comp plan, if our comp plan said we want an automobile centric development pattern here, we want, you know, the full range of commercial uses, then that would be what I showed you. But since we say, we want this to be an activity node, mixed-use, walkable, tight development, then that's not necessarily what you see. So if if the strategic plan item is to address that incompatibility, well, we should change our zoning to implement what we have in the comp plan or maybe change our vision on and what we are saying in our comprehensive plan for the desired development. And so here's sort of, I I, you know, went ahead and added this in. Uh we have the planned sidewalks and then we have, you know, the Soundside boardwalk and, you know, the green is just s- sort of consideration, you know, I I I guess when I park at um the Wellbone Park and my kids are playing there, there's already like a cut deer path that kind of comes out there. And, you know, I think if that was sort of a trail with, you know, some shade trees, that could be some, you know, a a better utilized park, there's a ton of parking there. Um and and that area is, you know, pretty well used. And we say in our comp plan, we should try to connect those two. I think it would be pretty logical to have a a sort of a free flow from Jeanette's Pier through Wellbone up to the light to the outlets and in. And then the boardwalk, you know, it's just been considered and discussed, um so I I sort of put it on there as an extension because you know, it it's, it it would, it's, it would seem to sort of uh implement what we've said we want to see as far as a connected, sort of cohesive outdoor recreation district with retail shopping. You can park, you can walk, some people would be recreating, some people would be dining. But again, it's just um sort of conceptual to get to to for the for the board to um sort of just think about the future of the area and what we do wanna see. And then, you know, I just sort of included here some public art examples.
Thank you. I, this is such a great idea and a huge missed opportunity locally, you know, for, you know, local art installations.
Mm-hmm.
You know, think about every beach access that we've got. And none of them have any art. That's a little nuts.
Some of them do.
What?
Some of them do.
We have art masks.
Yeah, our masks.
You have art masks?
Boardwalk mask or the
Okay.
We could, we could, we could do more.
Uh there's almost none of it is permanent. It's all potentially weather um degraded. Yeah.
But this is great.
Yeah, no, this stuff is
Are those fish, is that just, is that art? You know how some places have the, there are like trash containers on the beach that are shaped like that, like shaped like fish and different stuff?
Yeah.
That's, that's cool.
And so um I don't know if you guys are familiar with Jeff Speck's A Walkable City, sort of like urban planning theory. It's a short, funny read if you guys are interested in that. It's about thirty pages, but he talks about, you know, he goes from hundreds of cities. He's a pretty well-known urban planning consultant and
What's it called?
Uh The Walk, A Walkable City by Jeff Speck. And it's um, you know, basically he says, good walkable areas or cities or activity areas have four kind of common components. It needs to be interesting, comfortable, it should have a purpose and it should be safe. And if you're missing one of those, it's sort of like baking a cake, you kinda, you don't have the flour and the sugar in the water. It just doesn't turn out right. And so that's sort of, you know, if we have this vision for this area that's set out in our comp plan, you know, we're getting to safety with with our multi-use path and hopefully some crosswalks or this US one fifty-eight access management plan. But um there are some things we could do potentially to make it more comfortable, more interesting. And, you know, I think there is a purpose. People are down here on vacation or live here and they wanna walk to the outlets. But it's, I mean, you know, from personal experience, if you park somewhere and it feels connected, it's sort of easy, you know, like you can flow between those businesses and and along the sidewalks and, you know, if the dock dock boardwalk's a good example. But there are a lot of other cities that I think of the Charlottesville Outdoor Mall or um other districts in in cities that feel walkable and it's kind of got all of those components. So I I just wanted to put all this out there for you all to consider.
And something to add on to that, there's a a game changer is electric propulsion. You know, one wheels, e-bikes, they're really extending what people are doing on a bicycle because they don't have to rely on themselves. And this is part of what we're dealing with. Now, there are some real issues that we need to think about with that. Getting them away from traffic would be a great idea. Um worrying about how they're gonna rev up against walkability. Um and it's something, there's a, there's a, there's a ton of opportunity in this. Um but we're already looking at it, realistically speaking. The problem is NC DOT is not looking at it. One wheels are not a vehicle. Golf carts, I'm not even, I haven't even said those two words yet. Um so there's a lot of this stuff, I think there's a ton of opportunity in it. And I feel like you're right, getting in front of it is the right thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So I know that's kind of a uh sort of a, you know, a large amount of information, but um the task was sort of to look at the comp plan in our strategic plan and look at the incompatibility between our current land use plan and what we say we um want here and what an activity node is. And we de- designated this as an activity node and said, these are the types of development we want. Um but when you sort of look at, sorry, some of the C-two uses and and just potential that the district could be developed as is, you know, maybe the sort of putt putt and the waterfront jet ski rental place um in in time is not the sort of highest and best use that it could be redeveloped i- i- by right in in any of the ways that our underlying C-two allow. So um you know, potentially there's opportunity to update our ordinance to um either sort of remove uses and 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 do something from a zoning perspective. Um or incentivize existing businesses to have more accessory uses to maybe make them more viable. And also to um sort of from the town side, you know, continue to look at doing what we say we, our vision is in in the comprehensive plan and um create a more sort of cohesive activity node and connect those two major activity nodes. And that's all I have, so.
Yeah, I think accessory, adding accessory uses when possible would be something that we we could bite off, you know, without taking things away from people. That would maybe give give us more flexibility on development, you know, what might end up happening there. Um I'm trying to think of, this is a great, great presentation, pulling it all together and all that because it's still, thank you. It's still kind of mind boggling, you know, but um you know, whenever, like we talked about it, whenever you get into starting to take away stuff from people, you get into a whole um, a whole different orbit. I'm just trying to figure out a way that we could kind of go at it that makes sense, you know, um as a, as a board, you know, in pieces or whatever, cause this is a, this is a lot of great information.
I also like something else that you said as as kind of a, the d- the deer path or the walking path. Those are the lines that these things need to parrot. Um and instead of, I never walk a right angle. I never, I I try never to drive a right angle if anybody's ever followed me anywhere. Um bicycles don't follow those lines either. And if you think about it, those are also the most appealing um sightlines for for everything except a building. Um to curve the lines. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity to create, you know, all the walkways that are in that are shaped. They're not square. And I, the fact that water is the backdrop for all of this eventually is kind of a natural.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Good, I know it's, this is, what you did, it's, you herded cats into some kind of a document here, good work on it.
Yeah, it's good, it's good to think that we need to plan what we want there.
Yeah, one thing that po- you know, when was the last time we had a new outdoor recreation business?
I think it's the ropes stuff.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a lease, right? I mean, that's county owned. I mean, not that, it's great, but so we, you know, this, this thing was originally for, the cord was done in nineteen ninety-five, right? So it's thirty years and and at the time, you know, it was a way different time, right? And everybody was doing these businesses, but is that i- is that a big demand anymore?
Is is that in any of the surveys, is there any question like that in any of the surveys that have been put uh in there?
I mean, I don't know, I'm not saying it isn't, but
Yeah, I'm, I'm
And and you're ta- and you're talking about people, are these businesses even still open and that sort of thing, you know, or they just
That, some of those businesses are very busy, like there's a lot of putt courses.
Yeah, yeah, putt putt.
It's summer and the fall.
Yeah, and I hope so, don't get me wrong, but I mean, we have, I I think it would be good to try to get a grip on that before we try to, you know, because we're
We're kinda lucky that
Tilting at windmills, otherwise if we're just, you know, acting like that's the basis of this.
I'm glad to be on a donkey tilting at windmills. You know, but I, cause I think, I think there's a, there's a, there's a lot of strength in what we're talking You know, but I, cause I think, I think there's a, there's a, there's a lot of strength in what we're talking about, but the biggest thing is, what should we scrape to the edge? And is there, you know, y- you know, and, and think, and think about, you know, because the reality is, some of this probably doesn't make sense, I don't see anybody doing auto repair in any of this stuff. Um, now, but the, but here's, but this is the question I have, when you narrowly define density as it is in documents from the state, what does that, is there, is the, is, is there a narrow definition or is it impossibly broad and makes it very difficult to do anything? That's kind of where I am, the words on paper and the legality of those words, how does it collide with, with any nuancing? Because, um, you know, while we shouldn't cross a line, I think it's close to find out where it is.
So you're gonna put this out in written format for us, for us, or some type of?
Yeah, um, I will, um, we'll publish a report.
Then we'll just kind of keep discussing, or?
Yeah, so Ryan and Joe's done an amazing job, um, we put this, we compiled it all, it's a, it's a thick wordy document, someone's just trying to pare it down now to give you, you know, what we need to know. Um, and that might take a couple more days, so we're hoping by the end of the week, we can email you individually the report itself. But it's something that it's gonna take a good amount of time to digest and work through all the options, and, you know, some are gonna be more palatable than others, I think.
And I can assure you, somebody would love to have a car wash in this district.
Of course, I know, well, any, all the C two, multi-family, yeah. Or just single, big, big, single family.
Yep.
I mean, it could, um, tilt the whole, the whole thing, you know, so I do, I agree, I think it's great to be proactive.
Yeah, I think very much so.
Mm-hmm.
One thing I would say, I don't know if you remember, but during the multi-family process, a lot of these lots have a lot of underlying.
Yes.
So if you
And huge potential for.
Looked at that in terms of single family, two family, there's probably properties that could accommodate small subdivisions even.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It's something to think about.
And if it's, yeah, and if it starts going there, you know, it would change the whole, the whole situation.
Then they're not gonna be, wanna be located next to a go-kart track.
Well, that, that's probably the only reason they're not already there, frankly, you know, I mean,
Yeah.
So, but if, if anything starts to change, you know how that goes, like dominoes, you know?
It is for sale.
What'd you say?
It is for sale, but it may operate in the summer.
Right. So I mean, who, who, you know, again, somebody probably has a plan, and these things tend to go in cycles, you know, I think a fair amount of these properties have been held for a long time.
Yeah.
So, you know, um.
Yeah, I think, I think the root of it is, you know, we have this district that allows these commercial outdoor rec and, and looking at the history, it was because we didn't want them near residential areas, there was sort of an incompatibility there with land uses. And just allowing it was enough for all these businesses to, to locate here. And the market wanted that and, and does it still or, or not, I, you know, I, I don't know, smarter people or people i- involved in that do, but we do allow a lot of other uses by right, and we have sort of de facto built this pretty cool shopping outdoor recreation corridor, and so is it something that we want to sort of try and preserve through zoning, um, w- one way or the other, or is it something that, you know, if it became single family residentials or someone bought a lot and built a large residential home and they could do that by right, and that would
Right.
They could do that, it's allowed in our C two, on our underlying zone.
And we've seen that in a lot of places in town, residential development and, and C two, you know, or I say a lot of places, but a fair amount, right, you know, so, and thirty years ago, the distinction was, it seems like it was different to me, people didn't want to be near, near a go-kart track or a putt putt, but I, but now the lines are blurred in other places, I think, you know, people build places. It kind of surprised me sometimes, you know?
Yeah, we've seen a lot of C two develop residentially.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, so. Okay, so
Thanks.
You're gonna fix it all up for us and
Um.
Get it straight.
I'll put out a report, yeah, I guess I don't have any action items, because it's, it's sort of broad, but I, I wanted to sort of give you all a picture of what was considered there, what's on the ground, and sort of what our zoning says and what our plans have said and all these moving pieces kind of in one place, just a, a picture of it for you all to.
You know, it's very helpful and a great job, and I think if we, if we all get it and we can start to digest it, then maybe we can figure out a way to, to address it.
Yeah, sorry.
We start to, no, go ahead.
When you do your report, you're putting it together, um, if you can share concrete, specific examples, perhaps what you're talking about, um, it would be helpful.
Okay.
So that we can fully understand the direction and the intent and, and um better appreciate what you're trying to accomplish here, which I think is great.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else, questions, comments? Thank you, Joe. Yeah, thank you very much.
Feel better.
Yeah, I know, right, get rid of that cold. Okay, Kelly, did you have anything for your report that wasn't covered elsewhere?
I don't.
Okay.
Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at it, if questions, let me know.
Any questions or concerns on the planning director's report? Okay, how about members' agenda? Anybody have anything? And I have nothing on my agenda today.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
You can make a motion to adjourn, and a second we are adjourned then, thank you.
She looked at me, in my defense, she was looking directly at me.